Let's get started. Please take seats. Thanks, everybody, for turning out tonight for the debate for the Democratic primary in the first district. And I want to thank Judson Church, Reverend Donna Scopper, Jean Travis, and Zach, and Brendan, who's doing the tech tonight. And also, you might see the Villager newspapers around here. We're offering a special free year three subscription. So if you fill that out, you can get the paper for every week for three years for free. And there was also a pad up front for audience questions. I don't know if people filled out questions on that. And then there will also be a Q and A later on where you can ask candidates questions. I guess, you know, the elephant in the room here is that Margaret Chin is not here tonight. We had an article in the print and online versions of The Villager that she said... The elephant not in the room. The elephant at another event, she claims. And, you know, so she tried to negotiate terms to make it shorter, one hour, and have a co-moderator, which seemed to be just efforts to limit questions and to maybe perhaps softball questions and limit her exposure. And we initially didn't agree, and it just didn't work out. So the candidates are going to have a chance to criticize or critique the current council member, and she doesn't want to have the opportunity to answer because she's not here. So that's her decision. Right, yeah. And so Chin has served two terms. She can run for a third term because of a loophole under term limits when it was extended under Mayor Bloomberg and Christine Quinn. And so she's choosing to do that. And the district covers the financial district, Battery Park City, Tribeca, Chinatown, Little Italy, South Bridge Tower, Soho, NoHo, Lower East Side, Washington Square, and the area around it. We'll have... We'll start with three-minute opening statements by the candidates. And then we'll have moderator questions, one and a half-minute answers, and eventually we'll get to audience Q and A. So, and we'll just... We'll change the order each round. So this time, let's start in alphabetical order for opening statements and start with Erin for three minutes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate Lincoln. Thank you all for coming on such a nice day. My name is Erin Foldenhour, and I'm one of the candidates for New York City Council here today. So I've lived in the district for nearly 12 years. And I'm running because I'm fed up. I've seen with my own eyes small businesses close. I've seen homelessness increase. And I've seen school shortages increase here in Lower Manhattan. And I've seen our school systems fail our children because statistics show that only 37% of our high school graduates are college-ready. So I'm an attorney by trade. I do business litigation. And if you want to get anything done in New York City, it's complicated. It requires real laws, real complicated reform, not only local law, but there are going to have to be changes at the state law as well. And in order to get it done, you have to pass real laws that you're going to get through the system and close the loopholes that the wealthy and the real estate developers know how to rely on. So I don't want to take up my whole three minutes now because I know you have a lot of questions. But again, my name's Erin Foldenhour, and I look forward to this dialogue tonight.
Dasha?
Hi, my name is Dasha Imperiali. I'm a long-life resident of the Lower East Side, native New Yorker. I'm also an artist and a housing activist. In 2010, I negotiated long-term affordability for my development. I've helped countless families across the city. I battled and negotiated with one of the largest... With the largest real estate holder in the world, the Archdiocese of New York. I am running today. Of course, my platform is affordable housing, passing the Small Business Jobs Survival Act, getting height restrictions with the Chinatown Working Group Plan. But I am running because this system is rigged. There's nepotism, cronyism, and everything is corrupt right now. And I'm running because I'm fed up, and I want to be your voice in these tumultuous times because I am not a politician. I'm just like you. I do not have real estate developers backing me, or bankers backing me, or Wall Street backing me. I am real grassroots, and I'm running to be your voice September 12th. So if you want a councilwoman with integrity, that would be me. Thank you very much.
My name is Christopher Marte, and I'm running for City Council District One. I was born and raised in the Lower East Side, where my parents immigrated from Dominican Republic for an opportunity. An opportunity to have a rent-stabilized apartment, an opportunity to start a small business, an opportunity to have their kid get a quality, affordable education, an opportunity to have open spaces in our neighborhood. In the past eight years, we have seen this opportunity diminish. They're developing on our community gardens. Our tenants can't afford what affordable housing is considered now. When we look at small business owners, they don't have an opportunity to renegotiate their lease. It's these opportunities that build our neighborhood. We need change. I have fought for tenants' rights. I have helped small business owners understand their rights and legislations that can help them. I have been an advocate and an organizer for Elizabeth Street Garden. I helped the community in NYCHA, LES Info 1 and 2 create the first residential green committee where we built two community gardens. This is what I do. I help my neighbors. I help my community succeed. This campaign started with just a vision, a vision to have town hall meetings, participatory budgeting, which allows residents to vote on how my budget is spent, to protect our open space, to protect our waterfront, and to tell a small business owner that you do have an opportunity to renegotiate your lease. I started this campaign with no support. It was the people in District One that trust me, that gave me the opportunity to stand here today. And we've been able to create a coalition, not just from one part of the district, but throughout our district. We got endorsed by the Asian American Democratic Club, the Village Independent Democrats, the Village Reform Democrats, and the Downtown Independent Democrats. They believed in my vision, and so today, I humbly ask for your support. Your support will go to an opportunity, an opportunity to change our neighborhood. Thank you.
This is sort of a... This is kind of a general question, and I think it, you know, speaks to probably why Margaret isn't here tonight. This district is a large district from the village down to the battery. Do you think Margaret has alienated this part of the district with some of the decisions and actions she's taken? And why? And what would you do differently than her to connect with this village area, Soho, this northern end of her district? And so we're starting with... Dasha would be first.
Dasha Imperiali. Dasha. Well, I think Margaret has abandoned this district a long time ago. In the East Village, she had a chance to put a school there, and she couldn't even do that. She changed an area from residential to commercial and NYU expansion. What she's in is in pretty much donor service. She's not in public service. So as a councilwoman, you have to listen to the needs of your constituents, and that is exactly what I would do. I would not be advocating for developers to get big tax abatements for luxury development. I don't know if you guys know this, the 421A tax abatement, 70 cents... 77 cents of every dollar goes to luxury development. 11 cents to every dollar goes to affordable housing. I don't know about you, but I think that's backwards. I think what's going on is a real estate Ponzi scheme, and I think Margaret Chin is a part of this. And to allow developers to receive public land and claim she's building real affordable housing is disgusting. What I would do if I was your councilwoman, first of all, I would tell you the truth. If something is going to close down, I would get the community involved to organize, to go to a town hall meeting, and to sue the city if need be. But the problem with... Okay. The problem with Margaret Chin is she's not being honest with herself or the constituents. What you would get with me is honesty and integrity. Thank you very much.
I believe our councilwoman has ignored the whole district entirely. She hasn't been to a community board two meeting in two years. The basic responsibility of elected official, especially your city councilperson, is to show up, which she didn't do today, and she hasn't done in other debates, but also represent the people. Community members organized to actually have a community-based zoning policy, which is called the Chinatown Working Group Plan, to help preserve neighborhoods in Chinatown and the Lower East Side. She has not fully supported that plan. And so when you just look at the West Village, Chinatown, and Lower East Side, the same thing can be said for the Battery Park City and Tribeca. She hasn't showed up. She hasn't communicated to residents. She hasn't had a town hall meeting in eight years. I'll say that one more time. She hasn't had a town hall meeting in eight years. We need someone that's going to show up. My campaign is trying to represent everyone in our district. We've been trying to create a coalition to unify everyone under issues like small businesses, community engagement, and waterfront resiliency. I would be the councilmember that represents the north, the south, and east and west of this district. Thank you.
Why didn't you show up to the town hall meeting? If town hall meetings are so important, Christopher, why didn't you show up to talk about the community's concerns?
No, I mean, I'm sorry. What is your question exactly?
I said he's talking about town hall meetings. This is a debate to ask questions and get answers. I just want to know, why didn't Christopher Marte show up at a town hall meeting that Margaret Chin and de Blasio had?
So our mayor had a town hall meeting that was co-hosted with Margaret Chin. I decided not to show up because I didn't want to grandstand and make the event about me. I wanted to have residents to have the opportunity to actually ask questions to the mayor about what's happening with NYU.
But as a city councilmember, you have to have... You have to be able to speak up for the residents and your constituents.
Well, that was his... Okay, it's a good... It's a point well taken.
It's true. This is a debate. We ask questions.
No, it's allowed... It's allowable to interject. I mean, we're going to allow that if you don't go on and the person has a chance to respond, so.
And so what I wanted to do was allow members of our community who hasn't had the opportunities to talk to their councilwoman or talk to the mayor to actually have that opportunity and not make it about me.
Okay. Erin.
I've been surprised, as I've traveled all across the district and talked to voters like you, what people have told me about their interactions with Margaret Chin. I cannot tell you how many voters have told me they've contacted her office about a concern and never heard anything back. And it's actually kind of surprising because with the taxpayer-funded staff, you'd think she'd at least be able to send a form letter saying, "Thank you for your concern. I'll get back to you." But apparently, in many cases, she doesn't even do that. Now, let's talk about the town hall. So Margaret Chin did, in fact, have her first town hall in eight years a couple of months ago. I did decide to go because I wanted to go there and look Margaret Chin in the eye and Mayor de Blasio and tell them that I mean business. I saw Dasha there as well. Now, what happened at that town hall meeting? It was a fiasco. Margaret Chin controlled the town hall meeting from start to finish. People were given question cards purportedly to fill out questions. But then what happened once the town hall started? For the entirety of the town hall, Margaret Chin called on all of her friends and maybe a few others to ask questions. And a number of organizations came to me and said, "We were silenced at the town hall." And if I may have an extra minute, Lincoln, just to talk about something else that happened at the town hall.
Quickly.
I'll get back to it because it's going to take another minute. But the point is, Margaret Chin has not been responsive to her constituents, and we're going to talk more about that tonight as this unfolds.
Okay. Thanks. All right. This next question, this was one of our bigger stories last year, the Rivington House scandal. It was in the district. And, I mean, the question is, you know, who ultimately was to blame? Who knew? Who didn't know? Was enough done? It points to health care and the use of city properties and, you know, how on top of things our officials are. And so, you know, what was done? Who's ultimately responsible? And what should now be done with the property, if anything can be done? And let's start with Chris.
I believe that the mayor and our city councilwoman is held responsible. Because when we even ask for what happened, the transaction, the emails, we're not even given the opportunity to look at every piece of information through the dialogue. And our councilwoman has not fought to actually release that information. I think a city councilperson has to manage their district like a business. You know what's happening, what orders are coming, what these restrictions are going to be lifted, what zoning policy is expiring. And for her not to know that that was happening means she wasn't doing her job. So I make her accountable. I make our mayor accountable. And I live across the street from the Rivington House. So this is not politics. This is actually personal. Because I knew the janitor. I knew the people that worked there, the people that were being served there. And so it's a real drag in our community that they let this beautiful community space disappear.
Okay. Erin.
What happened to Rivington House is a tragedy. So you have this beautiful, old-school building serving as a nursing home, and then in the middle of the night, we wake up and find out that it's been sold to real estate developers. And then what happens some months later? That first purchaser then flips it to a second purchaser, who turns out to be China's largest real estate developer. And in that flip alone, $72 million was made on the transaction. So the bottom line is, is that not only did we lose this asset, but the city also lost $72 million in the sale. So it is a tragedy. And I went to that town hall, and, Chris, I wish you had come. I went to the town hall, and I heard Mayor de Blasio say that this local city council member has a unique position in any land use issue in his or her district. So in that case, Rivington House is in District One. Margaret Chin must have known, and if she didn't, she was sleeping at the switch. So the first step is to vote her out of office. And then the next step is to figure out what we can do. Now, unfortunately, a bad deal has already been done. We can try to fight to get the property back, but it's going to be difficult because of what Margaret Chin and Mayor de Blasio did.
I'm sorry, Chris. I'm sorry. That's not accurate. Deaf. But this is a district without...
Right.
We can't hear you. Come up here.
I mean, you can... There's a... We'll have a time... We'll have a question and answer from the audience later. Okay. Well, you know, if the candidate... If Margaret Chin was here, she could answer.
Well, Margaret Chin is supposed to be the checks and balances because she is the city councilwoman. She is the checks and balances of Mayor de Blasio, okay? Who I might add is... You know what? I'm not even going to say what I was going to say, okay? But he's in bed with the Real Estate Board of New York, okay? That's no surprise. He's a developer's prostitute, and she's right there with him. At the end of the day, Rivington House, okay, was sold in perpetuity, okay, as a non-for-profit. So whoever was in charge, whether it was de Blasio or Margaret Chin, they should both be held accountable. So as a constituent, unless you have shares in Rivington House, you should not be talking about Rivington House. At the end of the day, Mayor de Blasio and Margaret Chin should be held accountable for that. Period.
If I may interject...
No, wait. Hold on a second. I have something else to say about Rivington House. A $10 million fine is nothing compared to the money that the Real Estate Development... Real Estate Board of New York is going to make on that property over, over the life of that mortgage. $73 million for the state of New York is nothing. It's like a quarter. Thank you very much.
Okay. Now, let's start with Dasha and going back the other way.
Okay.
A member in the audience just pointed out, you know, Margaret Chin is not here tonight. So we should also be not just criticizing Margaret Chin, but focusing on what you guys will do if elected.
Oh, if I...
No, so this is... The question is, if elected, what are your top three priorities?
When I'm elected, September 12th, I will be fighting back for Rivington House, and I will say that that's going to be eminent domain. Because at the end of the day, that belongs to the city. It does not belong to a greedy developer. So that's what I will be doing when you vote me in September 12th. Thank you very much.
Okay. What are your other top two priorities if elected?
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. I get a little excited. Okay. My other top priorities are going to be affordable housing and advocating to abolish the 421A tax abatement because at the moment, that tax abatement is totally for the rich. Like I said earlier, 77% of that goes to luxury housing. 11 cents of the 421A tax abatement goes to affordable housing. I think there's something wrong with that. I would also advocate for AMIs in the area to be set to either a market AMI and a low-income AMI. Because currently, the AMIs that they're using for this affordable housing stock are not correct. They're using AMIs from Buffalo, upstate New York, and that is not the AMI of the area. The reason why we have such a homeless problem is because we have buildings that are empty that no one could afford, okay? I am in... I am running for city council because I'm not a career politician. I'm just like you, pissed off and fed up. I'm a burniecrat, okay? So what you're going to be getting is someone that's going to shake stuff up and someone that has been there in the trenches, saving people's homes, fighting with the HPD, fighting with HUD, fighting the Archdiocese. That's what you're going to get, a fighter. And I might add, I've been doing this for over 20 years when this nice gentleman was in high school, and this nice gentleman was in Virginia. Thank you very much.
Erin.
So a few of the priorities that I would address if elected. One thing is small businesses. I've seen with my own eyes small businesses close across the district, and chain stores move in. This whole district has been corporatized, if I may invent that term tonight. And so what I advocate is the passage of the Small Business Jobs Survival Act. Now, Margaret Chin, she claims to support the Small Business Jobs Survival Act. And now, what the act would do, it would actually give tenants a fair shake at the negotiating table with their landlords. Although Margaret Chin claimed to support it, and you have 29 city councilmembers claiming to support it, but it's never, ever come up for a vote in New York City Council. So what I will do on day one in office, I will not support any speaker for New York City Council unless they agree to pass, unless they agree to bring up the Small Business Jobs Survival Act for an up or down vote. Priority number two, maintenance. Most politicians don't like talking about maintenance. Because politicians like to build things, and we're building a lot of things in this city for the super wealthy, but actually, we're not maintaining what we have. And in fact, I remember one of the first nights I met Dasha. It was at a Village Independent Democrats forum. And a lady in the audience stood up and said, "I've lived in NYCHA for 30 years. They never come and fix mold problems that I have in my apartment. I get sick all the time, and now my three-year-old granddaughter has asthma. What do I do?" We're really failing our people in public housing. And also, we're not maintaining the other infrastructure we have. Priority number three, I'll just state it because I know my time's up, Lincoln. The environment. The Gotham Gazette identified me in surveying this race as the environmental advocate in this race. And I'll take that title. And in fact, the tragedy in Houston that's ongoing reminds us of all the work we have to do on the environment. So I hope we'll have a chance to talk about that later and afterwards in this forum today.
Good. Thanks.
My three main objectives is, first, passing campaign finance reform. One of the biggest issues that we see throughout this district, especially with our city councilwoman, is special interests and big development... Big developers investing in city councilpeople. In 2013, the Real Estate Board of New York created a super PAC where they spent almost a quarter million dollars in re-electing our councilperson. And we have seen the consequences, from the Two Bridges area to the NYU expansion to the development in Financial District. The second thing I would do is pass the Chinatown Working Group Plan. It's a plan to protect the neighborhoods of Chinatown and the Lower East Side by putting height restriction on any new development. This is important because right now, hundreds of people are being displaced from a neighborhood they helped build. And so we need to take action fast. The third thing is protecting our waterfront. You know, we see what happened with Hurricane Harvey, and it's actually getting a plan in place. I'm the only candidate here tonight that actually goes to every single waterfront meeting, that actually sat down with the chairs of the waterfront committees on community boards to discuss what's the plan going forward. And one of the biggest concern is, we don't have a plan. This could happen at any moment. We need to have a plan in place to protect our waterfront, to protect our neighborhood, and to protect our landmarks.
Can I just say something in reference to campaign finance reform?
Sure.
Okay. You told me, one, to step down because you were going to... I was going to split the Latino vote. Two, that you put in your last $7,000 from your retirement fund in the campaign. When I questioned you on television, you said you took it out of your savings. You said that you took it out of your checking. You also said that, basically, I was a liar, okay? That you did not do that. The point of the story is, why is it not in any of your filings? And I might add, everyone knows that you're getting money from Wall Street's bitch, Chuck Schumer, okay? So you are not... You are not grassroots, okay? At the end of the day, where is the $7,000? It's legal to give yourself a loan, yourself $8,000.
Let's give Chris a chance to respond.
But can he answer the $7,000 question?
Okay. Chris.
So that's incorrect. I don't know who Chuck Schumer. Met him once. However, I took out $2,000 from my retirement fund for my personal use. I don't have a lot of money. I come from a working-class family, and so I use that money to eat every day, for transportation and for hygiene. None of that money went into my campaign.
So why did you tell me that?
We all release financial disclosure, and every single campaign in New York City is audited by the New York City Finance Board. And so I passed, and I also received a full matching amount. And so they looked through my paperwork, they looked through my finances, and everything was clear.
Okay. So, I mean...
I would like to say a few words about...
Go ahead.
I would like to say a few words about campaign finance and sort of this election. So some of you may know that there are 800,000 positions for elected office across the country. And in over half of those positions, there is only one choice on the ballot. So we have a tragedy in this country where there's not enough people willing to run for office. And I believe that people here in District One are lucky that we have four choices, three here today and one other. But I do have a concern. When I entered into this race, Chris's people came to me and threatened me to try to kick me off the ballot if I decided to run. And let me tell you something. So let's talk about campaign finance. Let's talk about campaign finance, Pete, and we'll take questions later.
Are you in campaign finance?
Let's talk about campaign finance. So what did... So Chris Marte's campaign is publicly funded. Chris spent $5,000 on a lawyer, Sarah Steiner, a top election lawyer, to try to kick me off the ballot. And then he spent money trying to kick Dasha off the ballot.
That's not progressive, guys. Come on. Choice. Let the voters decide.
Okay, so let's... Let's let Chris answer to that. Let's let Chris answer to that, George.
So Sarah Steiner is one of the most respected lawyers.
So Sarah Steiner is one of the most respected lawyers in the city. We did not hire her to kick anyone off the ballot.
You can Facebook Live it, people, you can Facebook Live it, okay?
So we could keep on talking about accusation, we could talk about the issues. We did not even attempt to kick anyone off the ballot. We, yeah.
Did you challenge petitions?
I did not challenge any petitions. We did a general objection for, we did a general objection for Dasia's petition to have more time, because there was evidence of fraud. However, we did not...
There was evidence of fraud? Are you kidding me right now? I have a tape recording where you're saying you gave yourself $7,000. Do not go there, Christopher, because there was no evidence of fraud, and you could Facebook Live this. You could, no, hold on a second, you can Facebook Live that I am not a liar, and I was at the Board of Elections when I asked Sarah Steiner if they were challenging me, okay? And I had to spend money on a lawyer, being a grassroots candidate.
Okay, well, this, I mean, this can be, we can determine what happened or didn't...
Okay, so let's not lie here, let's keep it real.
You know, we can determine what happened or didn't happen. Chris is saying...
Yeah, well, he can't say, why is he saying fraud?
Maybe we have a he said, she said here, so...
It's not he said, she said, it's on tape.
We did not, we did not challenge any petitions.
Facebook Live it, Dasia Imperiali.
If there was a challenge, we would have known about it, and there was...
You did know about it, because you paid for it.
A few points, a few facts, Lincoln, on this.
Okay, well, this, you know, I don't know if we're going to resolve this here, so...
No, 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 but you can't lie. If we're going to, if we're going to be honest, and we're going to be city councilmembers that are honest, at least you should be man enough to say, yes, I paid for the lawyer, and I went to do general objections. At least say that, because there's no fraud in that. You said you can do that, but we all agreed that we were grassroots, and you would not do that. So you're not a man of your word, you're already a professional liar. Thank you very much.
I admitted...
Sorry, this is a debate.
I did a general objection on Dasia to have more time. That's all we asked.
So then how was I fraudulently or a liar?
I said there was evidence.
Okay, what's the evidence?
Okay, but, you know, Chris is stating his position.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I don't think any mischanging...
Don't lie, okay? Do not lie, because I'm not the liar up here.
All right.
I can't hear you, sir, you want my mic? I can't hear you.
No, we'll get to audience questions a little later. We'll go to audience questions.
I can't hear you.
Let's get back to some questions on issues. Super tall towers, Chris, you brought it up, the Chinatown Working Group. It's a very big issue, it's changing a neighborhood, and people say Margaret Chin has really not been present, has dropped the ball, has let this go on. What do you, what do you think, what can be done now to keep that neighborhood from being overrun with the super tall towers, if anything? Let's start with Erin.
Well, so as I said earlier, I've been characterized by the Gotham Gazette as the environmental advocate, excuse me, the environmental advocate in this race. We've all seen what's happened in Houston. We all see what's happening in Houston. And one issue that we have to face is that we have to be careful where we are actually developing. How many of you were here during Hurricane Sandy? So my apartment building was flooded, and I was crashing on friends' couches for three weeks. The flood threat is real in Lower Manhattan. But what are we doing? We're building all of these big mega towers on the east side, right along the water. And sure, they're going to put their generators on the second floor, or what have you. Big deal. These extreme climate events are going to keep happening. And we're going to have another flood sooner or later, and guess who's going to come crawling to you, me, and the other taxpayers for a bailout? It's going to be all the wealthy who've bought units in those condos. So what I call for is a complete moratorium on waterfront development until we are protected from these extreme climate events.
Chris, next.
So there is still time to actually pass the Chinatown Working Group Plan. Our councilwoman decided to slice up the plan and support the smallest area in the core of Chinatown. However, we have seen the consequences. And how many people have seen the Exteil Tower? That's a pure example of the lack of action of proactive zoning. And so not only can we still put community-based zoning in place to preserve the whole Lower East Side in Chinatown, but currently, community members got together, created an organization to do a lawsuit to fight against the next three developments that are happening. I've sat down with the community, I actually gave them a voice and held a press conference so we could educate and publicize the findings that they did, and our councilwoman has rejected their lawsuit, or to support their lawsuit. We need someone in the city council that when evidence is shown to stop developments that are going to displace people, we need someone to stand up and support that community. And that's what I'll do. I've been talking to members throughout our district and how we're going to preserve our community. And I think that's one example where I stood up. I gave them a platform, I gave them a voice to stop these developments that are going to displace people in my community.
Dasia?
Thank you very much for that, Christopher, but they did have a voice on May 11th. They also had a press conference where I have helped them research from the inception of LESSON. I have helped them research for records, for all kinds of information. At the end of the day, we do not want these mega towers going up, because these mega towers will have primary, secondary, and involuntary displacement. Margaret Chin, for eight years, has known these towers were going to go up. She claimed that it was an as-of-right. It was not an as-of-right to build, they needed special permits. She has, she has basically been absent to actually say anything till like a month before the election. She had a press conference about this. And all those people over there, LESSON, we are only asking, basically, for either DEC and EPA have a voice and hold people accountable. At the end of the day, new buildings are not minor site modifications. The Department of City Planning is changing words and the meaning of words. New buildings are not minor site modifications. And now Margaret Chin is actually saying that. She should have been saying that eight years ago. The URA expired in 2007, and the LSRD expired in 2009, and she got in in 2010. She could have been having rallies, town hall meetings, and that's something that I would do. If you vote me in, what you're voting in is a fighter. What you're voting, what you're voting in is your voice, because I will be your voice, because I am the people. Thank you very much.
Lincoln, one other point, if you don't mind. We don't even have the infrastructure to handle these mega developments. Subways are packed as they are, and a lot of people don't know that during any rainstorm, our sewage system is actually overwhelmed, and raw sewage ends up going straight into our waterways. And so we're building these new developments, but not adding an ounce of new sewage capacity, which just adds more strain on the existing infrastructure, and there's little to be done about it. So that's the power of the environmental review process that we can fully utilize to try to stop these developments.
Okay, thanks. Here's an audience question, and this ties into, you know, the Trump administration, and you guys are going to, you know, voters want to know what you can do to stand up to Trump and the actions that this administration is taking against the city. The specific question is, with the current news on deferred action for childhood arrival or DACA, what do you plan to do for the undocumented community in District 1? And let's start with Chris.
So earlier this year, actually, three months ago, ICE raided my building. And I was walking into my building, and I saw them in my lobby. What I did was contact every single neighbor and told them to stay indoors, shut their doors, and make sure they don't answer any question. These are the actions someone that's proactive does. When you see an issue, when you see a problem, you work on it. Last year, one of my neighbors was actually illegally detained by ICE. And what I did was stepped up and wrote, and got the community to write letters to the judge to say that he should be a part of our community. His green card was valid, and he was released within four months. This is the type of action my city council office will do, because my office will be a sanctuary office for everyone, no matter if you're documented or undocumented.
Dasia?
Well, in the renovations in our building, and I don't know if you guys know this, but most of the time when any construction goes up, it's usually undocumented workers that are being cheated out of wages. And I think that's criminal, because right now, in the 421A tax abatement, they hired the amount of money that, the scale of Davis Bacon wages. So when renovations were happening in my building and workers weren't getting the proper pay, I made a major issue of it with the city councilmember, with all kinds of offices to speak on their behalf, because at the end of the day, if you're getting millions and millions of dollars to bill, you should hire people that are certified, and if you're hiring undocumented workers, you should pay them Davis Bacon wages if that is the contract that you actually are offering, because they get the money and then they pocket it, developers, that is.
So we have to do everything we can to protect our undocumented immigrants here today. They make up the backbone of our society, and they do a lot of work that others are not willing to do. And one thing you need is effective, judicious law enforcement. It's actually a huge issue if an undocumented immigrant witnesses a crime. Then you have a situation where that person is then potentially unwilling to report the crime to the police or testify in court. So we need to make sure that we have sufficient protections in place so that we are all safe. And so what it all comes down to for now is criminal justice reform, to make sure these people are protected. And we also need advocacy on the federal level to make sure that the feds don't overstep their bounds here in our city.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay, did we all answer that question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I started.
You started?
Yeah.
Sorry, I got off track with the, this is an audience question, which is a good one, I think. We can start with Erin, but then everybody can answer as well. You know, Erin, what are your, you know, you say you've been called the environmental candidate, but do you belong to any environmental groups or communities, or what have you? Have you done anything environmental? I mean, you may have good, maybe your positions won you that endorsement, but have you done anything on the environmental front?
Actually, it goes all the way back to my childhood. So as a kid, I had three brothers, and my dad was an elementary school teacher, and my mom was also an elementary school teacher, but she was a housewife. So we had a garden, and I worked in that garden day in and day out. And it was an organic garden on top of that. And so I've worked in that garden for many years, and that taught me the value of nature. And if you talk to any environmental group, what they say is, if you want people to care more about the environment, then you need to have people interact with nature, you need to have people use the water, you need to have people go hiking in our parks like I do, you need to have people grow vegetables. And that's why I'm proud to advocate for the environment. And in fact, many of you have seen me at the farmer's market in Tribeca every week, talking with people about the environment and about composting. And I plan to continue to do that as your next city councilmember.
Okay, do the other candidates want to talk about their environmental?
I just want to say, when super storm Sandy happened, a lot of the seniors in my building, we did not have a database. So when I'm your city councilwoman, I will advocate for legislation so that seniors have a database, so that we know where these seniors are, so we can get them blankets, or army rations, or the things that they need. And I would also add in that database disabled, because my father-in-law, Michael Imperiali, was a disabled advocate, and I would also hope to put the bill and follow in his footsteps. Thank you very much.
I believe, I believe it's actually having a track record of work in the community. For example, Elizabeth Street Garden, I've been volunteering on Elizabeth Street Garden for more than two years. You know, last fall during the Harvest Festival, it was amazing. We saw seniors talking to young people, local artists performing, and that's what we need. We need a location that's going to build community. And it's these open spaces that allow us not only to breathe in fresh air, but actually communicate with neighbors. And so when I helped create the first residential green committee in the NYCHA residency, it was amazing, because we replicated that magical moment for people who are deprived open space. And so I actually have a track record of talking to my neighbors and building gardens for all of us.
Why do you call yourself a housing activist if you have never saved anybody's home?
I have never considered myself a housing activist, but I have fought for tenants' rights. Last year...
Have you saved anybody's home?
I actually helped an individual fight against his landlord. His landlord rewrote the lease midterm and took it to the court and asked this resident to pay $3,000 more than what he was paying. I went to, I went to the courtroom with him, I went to tenant court, sat with him, discussed his rights, discussed his positions, and he was able to get a just finding. And so that's what I'll do. I'm not a housing expert, but when my neighbor has a question, when he needs help, I'm going to do my research, I'm going to stand with him online and make sure justice is served.
Let's, let's continue on the environmental, specifically the Elizabeth Street Garden, which Chris just brought up. And, you know, it seems like the thinking is, nothing might happen on that garden until after this election, because that's the way, people say that's the way Margaret Chin works, or maybe that's the way de Blasio works, they don't want to make the decision before then. And I know a lot of advocates are hoping the new councilmember will get into office and somehow change that deal where there's not going to be senior affordable housing on most of the garden. Is that a realistic belief? Can that happen? And let's start with Chris.
If I'm your city councilperson, we will save Elizabeth Street Garden, because we have, thank you, we have a win-win solution in place. Members of our community, along with the community board and with the current Assembly amendment up to our city controller, has approved the resolution where we could save Elizabeth Street Garden and have five times as much housing on Clarkson and Hudson. The reason why our councilperson hasn't supported that proposal is because it's just outside of her city council district. If we want to build affordable housing for seniors, it shouldn't matter where it's located, it's about building it, and building as much as we can and the best that we can. So I will save Elizabeth Street Garden, because I've been part of the fight. You know, when they asked me to join a rally outside the mayor's YMCA in Brooklyn, I showed up. When they wanted me to do research, I went to the Department of Records and studied the archives to make sure that we could protect Elizabeth Street Garden. You know, it's not just saying that you will, it's showing the work, and I've shown the work.
How do you do that? By just, if you're the councilmember and you oppose it, then you kill it, or how does that work?
Yeah, so the one power that the city councilperson has, which I believe is the greatest power, is land use decision, having a yes and no vote on the land use process. Especially when you have every other elected official supporting it, you can make it happen, and I will make it happen.
Dasia?
Well, I would actually bring up the fact that AFFY is actually developing on there, and that's a conflict of interest, and I would ask to have that, the elderly senior housing on 21 Spring Street instead, because that's a better location. At the end of the day, we do not have gardens that people can go with their children and play, and even the magical garden is having a lawsuit right now, because developers, greedy developers, want to take half of that garden. Our green spaces are one of the reasons people want to come to New York. Central Park is an attraction to people. And what developers don't understand, if we don't have green spaces, you know, we live in this concrete jungle. We need spaces to have, you know, festivities with our friends and enjoy each other's company. And developers just want to build everywhere, whether it's historic areas, whether it's gardens, and there's no one stopping them, because there's no checks and balances. If you vote for me, I will be the check and balances for you. I will fight for you, because that's what I've done for the last 20 years.
Chris has one comment on that.
Just to fact-check, you can't build affordable senior housing in 21 Spring Street, because there already is Section 8 housing there. So I don't think that proposal is correct.
Well, they're building on 80 Rutgers, they're building on top of that and using their air rights. And at the end of the day, in your press conference, you didn't talk about the 20 seniors... And at the end of the day, in your press conference, you didn't talk about the 20 seniors that are being displaced.
So with 21 Spring Street, it's in the special, special Little Italy district where the height restriction is up to seven stories. Lira, which is the building on 21 Spring Street, is already seven stories and can't be built any further.
What I would propose is to build it elsewhere, period.
Aaron.
Where the, where the Elizabeth Street Garden is located, it's one of the least parked areas in the city. People on the west side, they actually have the luxury of Battery Park City, the Hudson River, et cetera, and also Battery Park. But people in Little Italy, there are very few parks, Little Italy, Chinatown, Soho in that area. And this is where environmental advocacy comes in. I spoke earlier about our sewage treatment plants and how they are, they don't have enough capacity currently. One reason for this are what's, what environmental activists like me call impervious surfaces. An impervious surface is concrete or pavement. And what happens with an impervious, impervious surface is water hits it, runs straight into the sewer and then straight into our waterways. And that happens because of overdevelopment. So that's why it's so important to preserve our places like the Elizabeth Street Garden. The city actually owns the property. It is not a done deal and that's something that any one of us can stop if we are elected instead of Margaret Chin.
Okay. You mentioned Battery Park City. I mean, this, we've been focusing a lot on the northern part of the district, but here's a Battery, a lower Manhattan question. Would you support the city taking over Battery Park City and assuming its debt in order to bring it under city council control? If so, would you support a law mandating that the profits from BPC continue going to fund affordable housing? And let's start with Aaron.
Serious reform is needed with the Battery Park City Authority. Most people don't know that Battery Park City is actually operated by a state authority, basically a state agency. So the local residents have very little, and in fact, this is an overstatement, control over what happens in their area. So people in Battery Park City, they pay payments in lieu of taxes, they pay maintenance fees and they pay other fees to the Battery Park City Authority. And the Battery Park City Authority is awash with money and awash with debt, if I might add. And people don't know where the money's going. And still to this point, and I live right across the street from Battery Park City, there is not one local resident of Battery Park City on the board of the Battery Park City Authority. So basically what you have essentially is taxation without representation. And what is even more outrageous is that you have very little affordable housing in Battery Park City and a number of the affordable housing units that we do have, which is in Gateway Plaza, are set to expire in about two and a half years. If you actually look at the charter of the Battery Park City Authority, it says that the mission of Battery Park City is to create a quote-unquote "sustainable" community of residential, retail and park space. So we don't have sustainability in residential units because now it's one of the more expensive parts of the city. And we don't even have sustainability as far as retail space goes because more and more luxury retail has been set in place that cater to foreign tourists, foreign tourists and not local residents. And we have only one, and I know my time's about up, so I'm gonna wrap up in 10 seconds. We have only one house of worship in Battery Park City and that house of worship is about to be priced out. So Battery Park City Authority needs serious reform. Thank you all very much.
Deisha?
I agree with Aaron that it does need to be reformed and I am the affordable housing candidate. If any affordable housing is going to be built there, it should actually be affordable to civil servants, to young people getting out of college, single parents, according to a real AMI of the area. The reason we have empty buildings and tax havens for the rich is because we're not actually building affordable housing. So I do believe that it needs to be reformed. Thank you very much.
I, I completely agree. It has to be reformed. There's no community member on the board. And so I think it should become under the city jurisdiction and not in Albany. Because no community member could commute up to Albany to actually help talk about how to manage Battery Park City. So the organization that's been fighting against the taxation without representation is called Democracy for BBC. And I hope everyone researches it and signs on to their petition because they need local representation. When we see it with smaller issues, whether sanitation or traffic, no community member has a voice. They don't even know when the meetings to talk about community issues are set until a week before the event. And so I've shown up to those meetings, I've talked to residents and specifically for Gateway to renegotiate the affordable housing units that are there. One of the biggest concerns by the Tenant Association president was if a new city councilperson does take office, how are they gonna help us in the fight if they're not part of our neighborhood? Well, I did outreach. I sat down with him for two hours and we talked about the steps that are needed to actually make sure that the affordable units remain in Gateway. And so it's being proactive, it's doing outreach and communicating to every part of this district.
Okay. On another issue, education is a huge issue in the district and there's issues of charter schools, whether you support those or not. Desegregation is a very big issue right now. So can you tell us a little bit, your thoughts on education in the district? And if you can mention specific schools that you, you are, where you have issues of, where you're interested in, in, in specific initiatives in certain schools or certain issues? Let's start with Chris.
So specifically, I was a, I helped save the after-school athletic program at MS-131. My friend who's a janitor at the school talked to me one day. He said, "The kids are gonna lose all three of their basketball programs because we can't fund them." And so when seeing our elected official at the time, Sheldon Silver, take millions of dollars of tax-paying money that could have gone to these kids to have jerseys, to have a basketball, to have time in their gymnasium, I thought was a problem and that's what made me politically active. It made me stand up and try to fight back. And that's what we need. Our school district within the city council district are split. Education district one, the biggest problem is overcrowding. We don't have enough seats in our classrooms. And so the two schools that were promised to us, NYU and Essex Street Crossing, haven't been built because our city councilperson hasn't stayed on top of it. In education city council district two, actually I flipped those, that's a city education district two, but in education district one, the biggest problem is diversity. And I think we need diversity. I was, I'm a product of that public school education. And the reason why I've been able to have a diverse education was because I sat in a classroom with African-Americans, with Chinese-Americans, with Bangladeshi-Americans. And that took a kid from the Lower East Side to study in China for two years because it broadened my horizon. It gave me curiosity and it gave me the courage to actually go and explore the world. Thank you.
I agree with Christopher on education. I think DOE takes too long to actually fund a school. They take five years to fund a school. I think that's way too long. I think our schools should reflect our community. Margaret Chin, like I said earlier, in the NYU expansion plan, had an opportunity to build a school. She screwed it up. In Essex Crossing, there's a thousand seats there waiting to be funded for a school. There's no money for the school. I would actually make developers create a school fund in perpetuity and fund a portion of the schools so that we have more leverage for our children. At the end of the day, our schools should represent this room right here, a diverse group of people. Our schools should never be one thing or the other. So I, I, I totally agree with what he said. At the end of the day, we need to build more schools. We have 30,000 families moving into District One and it's the same thing that happened in District Two. People procreate, there was not enough schools. It's like getting your kid into Yale or Harvard to actually get in a school. So that's what I would advocate for, for developers to actually build a school fund, not build, put money in in perpetuity. Thank you very much.
So as I mentioned earlier, my parents are both elementary school teachers. And so education's an important issue to me and education actually came up in the televised debate on the Manhattan Neighborhood Network, which is now streaming on YouTube. So for those of you who haven't checked it out, feel free to watch it and you can see more about us. But my dad watched the debate. He's in Richmond, Virginia and he called me up and said, "Aaron, it does take years to plan a school." So basically politicians have to be proactive in planning for new schools when they are needed. And I cannot tell you the number of parents who've come to me while I've been on the campaign trail and said that my child has to be bused 30 minutes, one hour each way to and from school because they cannot go to their local community school. And that's a tragedy because it creates more strain on that parent and that child is not going to school in his or her community with his or her friends and neighbors. So that's an issue. We also need to get back to basics with our school system. There's way too much of a focus on standardized tests right now. We need to teach, teach students how to think rather than teaching to the test. And I do believe in teacher empowerment. I've talked to a number of school teachers and the amount of micromanagement on our school teachers today, it's insane. We want school teaching to be a profession that people want to be involved in, like my parents. And this is something that we can do in New York City. This is something we can change. And if I may, we also have to deal with discrimination in our schools. You know, there's certain parents who can afford, and I know I'm running out of time, so let me wrap up in a second. There's certain parents who can afford prepping their four-year-old, their five-year-old child on the latest tests so that they can test into the best school. But a lot of families can't afford to do that. They don't have time for that and that's unfair. That's also something we need to reform in New York City.
They're already doing that. They're gonna be doing that soon.
So if you're, if that's directed to me, that's exactly what I was talking about. We need, yes, absolutely, we need diversity. And one of the reasons we don't have diversity, one of the reasons that we don't have diversity, I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Can you answer the, you quickly answer the question? The question is, did he not address the diversity?
I think I addressed it. I hear some Chris Marte supporters saying that I addressed it, so I think I'm good at this point. Okay, all right, okay, that's all good.
All right. We can open it up to audience questions. All right, let's do it later during the question and answers. Let's, let's keep on...
I'm the one who brought up discrimination, just for the record. So I'm the one who did bring it up.
Can I just say something? I would also advocate for children that are disabled have to wait hours and hours to get home because the transportation for them is not available. And I would actually make some kind of use with my discretionary funds and see if we can get disabled children home a little faster. Thank you very much.
Okay. On another important issue of police, under Mayor de Blasio, there've been reforms, but there's, many people would say there's still a long way to go. There's the Right to Know package of bills, which involves sort of Miranda rights for non-emergency interactions with police where they have to tell you, identify themselves, say they're why they're stopping you. Would you guys support that? And also in general, what do you think about the state of police-community relations, policing right now? There's more need to be done. Have we made strides, but there's more need to be done? Let's start with Deisha.
Well, I think that that question is a very good question because on both sides of the argument, police have a very, very difficult job. My uncle was a police officer in the seventies and their job is dangerous and there are dangerous people out there and there's a lot of mental illness. I think the community base, they have, once a year they have a night out, I believe it's called. I think that's one way of communicating, getting to know the children, getting to know the people that live in the area. I mean, I understand why police officers can't live in the area anymore because when they used to arrest criminals, criminals knew where they lived, so now they can't live in the area because of that reason. I think there's a lot more to be done, but I think that police officers are trying their best. I mean, at the end of the day, I think the, the broken window theory has actually broken lives, but like I said, it's a twofold question. You, you need to actually maybe do more community engagement, but at the end of the day, police officers have the hardest job in the world. And I think the community, engaging the community will actually work to create an atmosphere that we could all get along because police officers have a very hard job. Thank you very much.
Okay. Aaron.
I guess you got, you no collapse for police officers? I mean, you don't think police officers have a hard job? My God, they do. Thank you very much, two in the front.
All right. So as an attorney, this is an issue that's important to me. We do need more community policing. We need more community engagement between the police and the community because the fact of the matter is that the police depend on a good, good relationship with the community in order to do their jobs effectively. And unfortunately, we've gotten away from that. A lot of our police now is just about taking calls and responding to calls. We need to have police be more proactive. So I think there are some things we can do. And I am willing to stand up to the police. We talked about the town hall a little while ago and then I ran out of time and I understand. Lincoln has to enforce the rules here and I respect that. But at this town hall, a couple of months ago, Margaret Chin and Mayor de Blasio had the police outside the town hall confiscating political flyers from people's hands. Outside this town hall, I was campaigning, Deisha was campaigning, Chris was not there. Elizabeth Street Garden people were out campaigning. A lot of groups were out campaigning and very few of them had anything kind to say about Mayor de Blasio and Margaret Chin. So they schemed to have the police come and literally search people's bags and rip out of people's hands. Did they take one?
Yeah, they took all of our flyers.
Right. So what did I do the very next day? I issued a press release and days later filed a complaint with the U.S. Attorney's Office because serious crimes were committed. So I am willing to stand up to the police. Thank you. And I was not prepared that night for my flyers to be confiscated. I was not prepared to see the Elizabeth Street Garden's flyers to be confiscated. I was not prepared for Deisha's flyers to be confiscated, but it happened.
But Margaret Chin's flyers were not.
Margaret Chin was allowed to hand out her flyers, we were not. And so the point of the matter is that's something that you would not expect to have occurred in a so-called progressive city. And that's why we need to keep a close eye on our police. And Deisha, you're gonna add something.
I just want to say that I had my hand up for four hours and that woman would not let me speak. I felt like I was in North Korea. It was very sad. You can watch it on newyork.gov. And the question was to the Department of City Planning, only to ask them, "Why are they calling new buildings minor site improvements?" And she told someone in the front row, "Do not let that woman speak." Very sad.
On the police issues.
So I am, I am fully supportive of the Right to Know package because I believe in transparency and accountability. And that's the only way we're really gonna know what happens during these interactions. I'm proud that I've worked with countless amount of formerly incarcerated individuals and helped them start their own business and actually teach them how to use social media, how to do accounting, how to do financial planning, because I think education is key. If you give someone the education, they won't go back to Rikers Island. And I think that's, that's the type of reform we need. And for, it's also giving education to police officers. And it's not textbook education, but it's going to community events, it's going to Tenant Association meetings, it's going to Community Board meetings, it's having... tenant association meetings, it's going to community board meetings, it's having officers to have a different perspective of the people and the neighbors they're actually talking to and trying to enforce.
They do that already, they do that, they do do that.
Not in every community board they don't go, and they don't go to every tenant association. But I will encourage it because we need to have a dialogue with them that's outside of just if you're doing something unlawful or not. We need to actually have a personal relationship with our law enforcers.
Let's do one more question and then let's open it up to audience questions. I think everybody may have said they support the Small Business Jobs Survival Act.
Yes, I do support the Small Business Jobs Survival.
But in addition to that, are there other things, like at another forum I moderated, somebody said they supported a Business Improvement District for the entire East Village, but not everybody supports that approach. Do you have other ideas besides the SBJSA on what can be done for small businesses? Or is that, is that the main thing? And what can be done to pass that through? Aaron, start with you.
The problem with Business Improvement Districts is that they end up being co-opted by the real estate developers and the landlords. And all that does is cause the area to become more corporatized. And so we need strong regulations. In addition to the Small Business Jobs Survival Act, we need strong regulations on store sizes. And we even need to look at how much formula retail we're going to allow in this city. Because at some point, if every corner, there's a Duane Reade, fine company, Banana Republic, fine company, Gap, fine company, it's not what makes the area, Lower Manhattan, interesting. Lower Manhattan is where the Dutch settled in 1624. So we do have a lot of historic neighborhoods here. And we do need to keep, preserve the character of our neighborhoods. And, and you know, there are other things, there are other factors, Lincoln, to answer your question, as to why we're losing our small businesses. One is that in the federal tax code, it gives landlord a strong incentive to kick out a small business and leave a storefront empty. If you wanna come with me one day on the intersection of, let's see, Houston and Broadway, and let's walk south, you'll count 100 storefronts, 20 of those will be empty. So it really is a tragedy. And when you have rents going up, when Amazon continues to undercut, you know, the businesses in our community, it totally doesn't make sense and we're setting up another bubble. So that's why comprehensive reform is necessary. I appreciate the question, Lincoln.
Chris.
So I fully support the Small Business Survival Job Act. I was actually endorsed by the writer of the legislation and advocates that kept it alive, the Small Business Congress. And so I would continue to advocate it as much as I can. Another way to actually help small businesses is to look at the property tax. We need property tax reform in New York City because a lot of these taxes go straight to the small business owner that doesn't have protection. So they're paying the tax for the whole building. And so it's reforming at the core of the issue, which is property tax.
Okay.
I agree with that, so that's, she's like, why are you, yeah. I agree with Christopher and Aaron. Right now, small businesses are completely getting the short end of the stick. They have to come up with 3% to 4%, I believe, upfront. I don't think that's fair. I think we should take money out of the Real Estate Board of New York and tax them and give it to the small businesses. At the end of the day, small businesses make our community thrive. Our favorite store, our jewelry store that makes earrings, our little bodegas that we love, those businesses will be priced out with big box stores. We must protect our small businesses. That is a part of New York City. New York City is this beautiful melting pot of all different kinds of stores and where you're, where you're receiving tax abatements, like in Essex Crossing, there's big box stores there. Big box stores are going there. Big box stores don't belong there. Mom and pop stores belong there. I love Target, but Target is a big box store. I love Whole Foods and Trader Joe's, but they are big box stores. They will price out the small supermarkets across the street that have been there for years, that have been in the community when no one wanted to be here. At the end of the day, we need to, we need to give back to the community. We don't, we don't need to take away from the community. These small businesses are the foundation of our community. Thank you very much.
Great. Okay, let's open it up to audience questions. Now, is Brendan still here? Do we have a wireless mic? Or we can just, it's pretty small space, people can just shout stuff out. Let's see. Okay, let's start with you, if you want.
Thank you. My name is Ms. Rivera. I work for Child Support. And every year, we try our best to help families get supported, whether you're married or not. We really try to help people. I'm not impressed that Margaret Chin is not here, for I voted for her twice and I begged her not to run this year. I begged her to stop doing what she's been doing.
Okay, do you have a question?
My question is, if you're interested in housing and you're caring about affordability, you should care about the seniors that worked over 30-plus years and now they can't afford their homes. If you're gonna be the city council, you better work hard because Margaret Chin didn't work that hard. I'm from Tribeca and we worked so hard to keep Independent Plaza, which a lot of you know today as Stella Management. And they took over 1,600 people and took them to housing to get them evicted.
So is the question, what are they gonna do on?
So what are you gonna do?
Senior tenant rights?
About seniors and tenants that have been there over 25 years or more and all these LLCs are just taking them out.
Okay, Chris.
I, thank you. First, I wanna thank you for all the work you do. I know it's not a hard, it's a difficult job. My mom actually deals with child services as well, and she helps parents, actually teaches them how to treat their kids in the right manner. And you know, that's great work, that's amazing. And I fully agree with what you're saying. We have to protect our seniors. That's not only making more affordable senior units, but also funding services and organizations that give food to communities and to seniors. My first job was Meals on Wheels as a kid, and that made me crisscross the district in handing food to seniors. And you see the value of that. And when you have a president that wants to take those services, take those fundings away from our community-based organization, that's wrong. If I'm a city council person and the 45th tries to cut that, I'll make that up with my budget because it's really important that we take care of the people who build our community.
Deisha.
Well, I mean, like I said earlier, my, my biggest thing with Margaret Chin is the 20 seniors that are being, gonna be displaced at AD Rutgers, that we are not allowed in there to speak on their behalf. And I think that's criminal. What I would do is, I mean, I would fight for seniors because that's what I've been saying in the, in the last, I've only been in the race for four months. I've been speaking about what's going on in AD Rutgers for close to four months. I think that behavior is criminal to, to actually displace someone that is not even mentally aware of what's going on with them. That could possibly kill a senior. And to be able to do that...
Be okay?
Yeah, it's upsetting. It's really upsetting. Because seniors have built this community and she is the chair of Department of Aging. I'm sorry, I get emotional about that. So what I would do is, I would build a database in terms of protecting seniors so that we can know where they are when there's an issue like Sandy. I would actually build real affordable housing. I would not, I would also go as far to actually help them fill out the housing. I know de Blasio's doing something like that, but they shouldn't have to jump through so many loops and hoops to get housed. Because seniors, that is big business. Poverty is big business. And at the end of the day, seniors are getting screwed and no one's speaking up for them. Margaret Chin, I think 15 senior centers were about to close and she wanted to change them into NORC, I believe, because that's even more money that you can misappropriate. So I would be an advocate for seniors. Thank you very much.
Sure.
So many of you have seen me out on the campaign trail, talking to voters like you. And some of the most pleasant interactions that I have are with our seniors. And we must protect our seniors, and that's what makes the Rivington House sale in the middle of the night so outrageous. I think there was, there was and is a need for a nursing home in that area. In fact, if you look at the demographics, not only of Lower Manhattan, but also all of Manhattan and New York City, the population is getting significantly older. Sure, there are some young people moving in, but on average, the population's getting significantly older. And we don't have the facilities, we don't have the apartments to house these people. So what happened with, with the Rivington House? And unfortunately, Margaret Chin is not here today to answer those questions. But I will, go ahead. Right, so that's where we need real reform in our housing policies. And one problem that we have is that we have all these new developments going up, but very little is being built for our seniors. And that's as the population's getting older. So that's something we have to look at our housing policy from top to bottom. Thank you for your question.
Okay, let's, over here.
Thank you. Hello? My name is Mildred Martinez and I'm an advocate for my community. I don't get paid for what I do. I'm in and out of court with people that are being displaced and are not given every opportunity to put up a good argument. I went to court yesterday and I begged the judge, Katz, to please take the time to look at the facts. Just open the folder and read the facts. They're not listening to anyone, they're just expediting. Next, you're a number? Next, that person has to leave the home? That's it. We need to reform NITRA. NITRA is not being held accountable for what's going on. It is not fair that I have 12 folders of 12 families plus with their children that are going to be evicted as of today, okay? I've been all this week trying to put a stop to it and you know what? I went to the mayor's straight, they sent me to the special unit that was supposed to make it possible for these 12 people to, to find a solution for their eviction.
Is your question, is your question, what's your question?
Rather, my question is, because I asked the ma, rather, the judge to let me, allow me one question, that, the lawyers that were there, do they actually know the laws to the leases to the New York City Housing Authority that it's a federal funding program, okay? That they don't know that answer? They didn't know that it's in the bylaws?
So are you, what are you asking the candidates, would they do?
What are you gonna do to reform it? Because it's in desperate need of reform. Housing has to be held accountable because they're the largest slum lords, landlords, and no one is holding them accountable like they do to the other landlords.
Okay, start, Deisha.
Well, I agree with you. I was actually at the rally in City Hall for these families that are gonna be displaced. The reason they're gonna be displaced is because NITRA no longer wants to honor the succession rights for these children. And these children are not children, they're about your age and they have, you're probably like 20-something years old, are you 20-something years old? Okay, they're, well, you look really young. They're like 25-years-old, they're people that work and they're being displaced from their homes. At the moment, what's going on is the process that they're doing, they're taking someone from an informal grievance to a formal grievance. They're skipping the step for the legalities to go to 250 Broadway and fight for these individuals. I would advocate that it would be mandatory that NITRA could not do that to individuals. They would have to go step by step and prove with written documents from the tenants that they went through these steps. Because at the end of the day, this city is the biggest slum lord with NITRA. They are the ones that misappropriated the funds. Scott Stringer proved that, the comp controller, he proved that at a time. And he saw, when he did an audit of NITRA, that even someone like the X-Men was like filling out paperwork in NITRA. That's how corrupt NITRA is. But because real estate developers want free land, they are now getting the free land and getting these assets, not paying any property taxes whatsoever. And then eventually, these people will be priced out. So yes, I would advocate to reform NITRA because it is the right thing to do. I might even advocate it to say that it's a historic district because a lot of NITRA properties are very, very old, like Veladix Housing is a very old, old property. So I would, I might advocate for that as well. But yes, I would be a voice for those people, for everybody.
Chris.
Thank you.
I think we need to reform it by actually giving the tenants a right to counsel. NITRA does not currently have that. So for the tenant leaders who understand the bylaws and understand their rights, there's 100 other individuals who can't even read the paperwork because it's in English. I think we need a city council person that's gonna be able to make sure that they have a lawyer, they have a translator, so they can know their rights, they can know their lease. And even take it a step further, NITRA decided to digitalize a lot of its information. Many of our seniors don't have computers. Many people who live in true affordable housing don't have a computer. We need someone in the city council that's gonna have a mobile office and be able to educate how to fill out the lease, how to talk about damages that are being done to their buildings. We need to be proactive because these are the people that are disenfranchised and are being displaced. I will fight for them.
I think she did pass the right to counsel just recently in July.
That's for regular tenants, but not for NITRA tenants.
Well, some tenants were using that.
Okay.
Yeah. But I agree with you.
Aaron.
Well, Mildred, I appreciate the question and it's been good seeing you around the community over the last number of months. And can all of you join me in giving Mildred a round of applause for her advocacy that she does every day? So those of you, all of you here today know this, because you're here on a nice evening, that who you elect as your city council member has serious consequences. This is actually a serious responsibility you're dealing with. So what I ask you to do, and when you go talk to your friends about what you heard tonight, please advocate for electing the person that you believe, no matter who it is, will actually effectively use the tools of the office to get real reform done because real reform is difficult, as you see, Mildred, every day. And using the tools of the office, so number one, I've called for a top-to-bottom audit of NITRA. NITRA actually has a lot of money. One question is, where is it going?
Misappropriated.
That's right. So point two, point two, one power that council members have is the power of the subpoena power. And that is, New York City council members have the power to subpoena New York City agencies, including NITRA. I'm not aware of any circumstance where Margaret Chin has used this power. It's about time that the city council member that you elect holds the mayor and the large executive branch that grinds away on people like you and me every day accountable. And we can do that, we can do that by having an active council member who subpoenas documents and who questions NITRA leaders to ensure that they are accountable, and now I see the stop sign.
Okay. I think Sharon had a question.
You got it, Mildred.
Okay, good.
Hi, I'm Sharon Woolums. I'm so happy to hear that all of you are on board with the Small Business Jobs Survival Act that I've been writing about. But we all know that this bill's been denied a hearing for seven years and by Romney and the corrupt political machine. So if elected, any one of you would be a freshman council member with limited powers. So my question is, what steps would you take to gain an honest hearing on the Job Survival Act or any legislation to protect commercial tenants when such a powerful lobby is doing all they can to stop the hearing?
Chris, start.
So I agree. There's enough signatures of city council people to pass this bill and it hasn't passed for a reason. And it's because of Romney and special interests. And so I would take it to the people. What I've been doing is having... What I've been doing is having town hall meetings for small business owners and educating them on the Small Business Survival Job Act. And once you tell them about a legislation that can actually help them renegotiate their lease, they jump on board and they start advocating for it. And so it's the same thing we're doing for the IDC up in New York State Senate, is doing it with the Small Business Survival Job Act, is identifying council members who are trying to block it, and making sure that small business owners know who they are, so we can mobilize, communicate to them, write letters, phone calls, and make sure that they pass legislation that helps preserve our community and helps preserve small business owners.
Erin.
So this is where my experience as a lawyer comes in. So I actually talked to some political people about this some months ago when I entered the race. Is it Cheryl? Sharon? So Sharon, I actually investigated this, why has it not come up for a vote? And what the political people told me is that, well, the speaker of the city council can decide, well, what comes out for a vote. So there are two responses I have for you specifically, and I don't want to bore you with parliamentary procedure, but it's important here. So one thing that I said earlier is that I promised you today that on day one, I will not support any candidate for speaker of city council unless they promise to bring the Small Business Job Survival Act up for an up or down vote. So then we'll get a vote, and then let's see, those 29 councilmembers who claim they're for it, let's put them to a test and actually get a vote in. Because my guess is a number of them don't want to vote on it. And it's about time we end the trickery, okay? Let's put them to the test, and let's have a vote. So number two, let's say that I fail in that effort, and my speaker candidate does not win. What I'll do is, I will sponsor the Small Business Job Survival Act, and I will file what is called a motion to discharge. And that's a real thing, if you want to Google it. And basically, if I get a certain number of other councilmembers to sign on to my motion for discharge, then no matter what the speaker thinks, or even if the speaker refuses to bring it up for a vote, it will in fact go for an up or down vote. So that's what I'm gonna do specifically, to make sure that it's voted on and acted on in city council.
Desha.
I agree with Erin and Christopher. The Real Estate Board of New York pretty much runs the city, they're giving city officials hundreds of millions of dollars. If you look at my filings, none of my money is coming from bankers, but the real threat is the Real Estate Board of New York. The only way to stop them is with the small businesses rallying around the council member, having a town hall meeting, and actually showing people that we want this bill to pass, the constituents want this bill to pass. The Real Estate Board of New York should not be running the city. We should be telling city officials what to do. That's our tax dollars, we work for you. We work for you, you are our boss. What you want is what we should do. And it's not like that, because there's too much money in politics. I mean, I would also advocate to, you know, take money out of politics, but that's a whole nother story. Wolf-Pac.com, that's, you know, a whole other issue. But the point of the story, the Real Estate Board of New York is running the city, and we need to make sure that people know that, because everybody's sleeping, lots of people are sleeping. Thank you very much.
Let's see, okay, you had a question earlier, back there?
I have two questions. My first question is, Erin and Chris were speaking about resiliency. I used to work for good old Lower East Side Goals, and we were the organization in which we created LES Ready, which was 40 organizations. So you stated that you attended every meeting in regards to waterfront? No, you didn't, Chris. Erin, you're talking about environmental issues, and you're talking about composting, we do that in the community. Actually, we have our schools that do it, and we have LES Ecology Center. I don't want you to misinform people about the things that you both are not doing. My second question is--
I'm composting.
My second question is, I want to know, what do you three feel about the SIP grant that's in our community that discusses diversity? Because our schools are the most segregated in New York State. For a diverse community, which is the communities that you represent, how do you feel about the SIP grant?
So it's a two-part question on-- Okay. Okay, so I don't know if you guys want to respond to that accusation, but then also on the grant, so start with Erin.
So resiliency, I lived through Hurricane Sandy, and it's something I'm gonna fight for. And what's happening in Battery Park City? There's all this money from the federal government sloshing around, nothing's been built to protect us. And what was proposed just recently as part of the resiliency plan with the federal money? A mega restaurant in the southern end of Battery Park City with a sweetheart deal to a restaurateur. So that's not what we want to spend our resiliency money on. We need to spend our resiliency money on actually protecting our infrastructure and protecting our coastline, particularly natural barriers that can absorb floodwaters and control it. Diversity in schools, it's very important. So I was the only one up here who talked about discrimination. Obviously, we have limited time, I'm sure all of us want to talk about discrimination in our school system. So it's a big issue. Part of it's standardized testing, and part of it's based on, you know, location. And we need fairness in our schools, and I'm proud to have grown up in a public school. And I'm proud to have grown up in a diverse school, in a very mixed-income neighborhood. And that we have to preserve, we have to make sure it happens here in New York City, so that you have equal opportunities for everyone.
Desha.
Well, thank you very much for that question. I know you guys worked really hard on that grant, it was a long process. That money is still in a fund that the schools cannot touch because of mayoral control. I want to fight so that the mayor does not control that, because at the end of the day, that money should go where it's supposed to go, back to the community. And parents have fought very hard for that, and to no avail. And at the town hall meeting, that question was proposed. They said by the end of January 2017-- When did they say that they would start to release some of those funds? Okay, so a year from now. The point of the story is, schools are getting the short end of the stick. I would advocate, as a city councilwoman, to find out with the assemblywoman that has been asking Cuomo for that money, and Cuomo is saying the money has disappeared, we don't know where the money is. At the end of the day, there has been lots of lies about schools and what's going on with the school system. Margaret Chin has also said that she advocated for three schools to be built. I know that two of those schools, parents, parents, went and looked for buildings where these schools should be, okay? Parents did the legwork. Parents went out and fought for their children. Margaret Chin is just claiming that for her mailers, but she did not do that. So you should research what comes in the mail, because at the end of the day, you need to know what's going on in your community. Thank you very much.
So going to Lila's point, I did see you at the last waterfront resiliency meeting. I haven't been in the beginning since Sandy, but I have been active the past two years in actually going to events. And so about diversity, I think it's extremely important. We look at the schools in Lower East Side, and it's extremely segregated. We see the schools closer to Chinatown, mostly Asian-American. We see the schools closer to the East Village, mostly Caucasian. And we see the schools in the Lower East Side, mostly African-American and Latino. We need to break that structure. We have to bring diversity to our schools, because it's just not what you learn in the schools, it's what you learn from the people around you, the dialogues, the conversations that you have every day that create who you are. And to be part of Lower Manhattan, one of the most diverse communities in the world, our classrooms should represent that. I had that opportunity when I went to PS20, and it's sad that the kids in PS20 now don't have that same opportunity.
Okay, I guess it's getting, we're getting toward the end, so I guess, you know, let's take one or two more questions here. What about this gentleman in the back there?
Some, can everybody hear me? Does this work? Whoever wins is gonna have a hell of a lot of work to do. An enormous amount of work to do. I communicate with Margaret Chin, I'm not a fan of hers per se, but I communicate with her staff every week about one issue or another that takes place just on my city block. Can be having to do with NYPD, have to do with film industry, it could have to do with any number of things, Department of Buildings, all kinds of malfeasance, all the time. And what I want to know from each one of you is, with some specificity, how you plan to run your office? Who are you going to hire for your staff? How are you going to make the time and be able to do this job on a day-to-day, hour-to-hour, week-to-week, you know, basis, and really get the job done? Can you talk to us about that for a few minutes?
Okay, let's start with Desha.
Thank you for that question. I have been doing the job of helping and advocating for people, not only in housing, on different issues, senior issues, helping them call, social services. I've been doing that, and I'm the only candidate that's done that for the last 20 years. I am the only candidate that actually has fought with HUD, HPD, city officials about things that have not been kosher. I've been that constituent that I hope you all turn into, because you need to communicate with your councilwoman, you need to hold her accountable. And I would like to add, I actually am running for, I've been only running for four months, but one of the things that, like you, I've called Margaret Chin's office for years on many different issues. I mean, there was an issue that a gentleman died in the elevator in my buildings after a $97 million renovation, and I had wrote an email to her and everyone else telling them that the middle elevator was a death trap, and that that elevator, even after a renovation, needed to be checked in and looked at. And what did she do? She did nothing. So if you elect me to be your councilwoman, I am that person that will listen to your needs, because I am you. I've been on that other side. I'm only here right now, I don't want to be a politician, I want to be a political game changer. I want to be your voice, my office will be diverse, I want to be the voice of the people, because I am the people. I haven't run repeatedly, year after year. I'm running now because I am tired of being fed up. And I have the ability to speak to HUD, I have their direct number, I have the ability to speak to HPD, I have the ability to speak to people, because that's what I've been doing for the last 20 years. I'm here to serve the people that run this city. Okay? The working-class people. I'm here to protect you guys, that's what I'm here to do.
Thank you. Erin.
Not the people that run the city, okay? I'm here to protect the people that work in this city, not the people that run the city. Thank you very much. I can't hear you.
Well, I'll respond at this point. So you're right, it is a serious responsibility, and I'm used to serious responsibilities as a lawyer. I've worked on very complicated lawsuits with very high stakes involved, where people's lives were on the line. I've worked with big teams of people, I've appeared before all sorts of different types of judges, I've sat at the negotiating table, working with different lawyers and parties of all sides, trying to get deals done, and sometimes trying to advocate. And so, right, there's a lot of administrative work involved, and I'm used to that, because I've worked with secretaries, I've worked with paralegals, I've worked with lawyers, I've worked with adversaries. And so you have to have, as a councilmember, a solid operation in place, which Margaret Chin, let's be honest, she doesn't have a solid operation in place, and that's why people are fed up. You know, I was actually listening to another councilmember speak some months ago, and she said that the executive branch, the mayor, with the thousands of members of the executive branch, can run circles around the local city council member. Because as a local city council member, you only have a small handful of staff. And so it is important that you elect someone who's actually capable of digging into complicated legislation very quickly, solving problems, closing loopholes, and hiring competent staff to make sure that an incompetent executive branch does not run circles around our community. And that's why I'm running. Thank you, sir, for the question.
My office would be an open office. You know, I've been working with community leaders on different issues, and I'm not an expert on SoHo zoning, I'm not an expert on the Special Little Italy District, but I know the people who are. I know the people who've been fighting, been advocating to protect their neighborhoods for 20 and 30 years. And so it's having those relationships with the experts on the ground to have a seat in my table, so we could get together and actually fight for what the community wants and deserves. And it's representing everyone. My staff is gonna have Chinese speakers, Mandarin, Cantonese, Spanish speakers, because we need to represent every part of this district. One of the ongoing concerns I get is, people from the village say, our councilperson doesn't go north of Houston. I have individuals in Tribeca that say, our councilperson doesn't go west of West Broadway. We need someone that understands the leaders from all parts of these communities and that's willing to do outreach, like I did in Battery Park City, like I've done with tenant leaders throughout NITRA. We need someone that's actually gonna listen to them and actually have a track record of working with them. Whether it's helping members of SoHo and mobilizing the community to actually question some of the illegal construction that's being done on Broadway, or standing with members on Bari, even at a community board meeting, and say, we need to protect the Special Little Italy District, is identifying who's the experts on the ground, working with them, and giving them a platform to get what they deserve.
Actually, we are running kind of late, we're running pretty late here. Well, okay, all right, let's do it.
Hi, my name is Naomi, I'm from the Lower East Side. So people and people of color have been considered criminals in low-income communities. I read lots of self-help books and emotions. People don't do things just because, it's the environment, the upbringing, the upbringing, et cetera, et cetera. What can you do about building more mental health centers?
So the question is specifically, mental health?
Mental health centers, what can you do to build more mental health centers in low-income communities?
Chris, start.
So I think the best way that a city councilperson could do to actually start tackling that issue is working with community-based organizations that already have those services. You know, whether it's University Settlement, whether it's the Chinese Planning Council, is knowing that they need funds to help people with mental illness. So that's what I can do my first year in city council, is saying, this is a crucial issue in this neighborhood, we need to partner up with community-based organizations to make sure that those services are there for people and that people know about them. So doing the outreach, going to the places where they live and saying, we have these free services for you to have. And so that's what I'll do to tackle that issue.
Well, I personally believe that there is a lot of mental health problems out there, and most of those people live in shelters or on the street. I would implement in these shelters, since shelters right now is such a big business and it's so profitable, people need homes, not shelters, first of all. But people, I don't know if you guys know about this, but there was a person that jumped off their building because they were evicted. And this person was deemed to be crazy or mentally ill, but it was only because they were displaced. People do desperate things at desperate times, so before people even get into the shelters, we need to have places where our young people could go and talk, and talk to people about the problems and anxiety they're feeling, because our community is under attack right now. Our youth is under attack, our artists, our seniors. We need to protect our community by developing social programs where people can go-- We need to protect our community by developing social programs where people can go and get help, the help that they actually need. And that's what's, that's something that I would advocate for. Thank you very much.
So mental health, we have a lot to do. The city spends over a billion dollars a year on homelessness.
Yep.
Where is the money going? Thank you, Mildred. She said, "Who's being held accountable?" So we have a lot of work to do. We're putting these people in hotel rooms at a cost of upwards of $600 a night.
More.
Even more? $2,000 a night. So what does that mean? We're putting these people in hotel rooms with no kitchens, no mental health facilities, no career counseling, and we're failing these people. And I don't know about you, but you see homeless people sometimes on the subway? Next time, look at their wrist. A lot of times you see a hospital bracelet. We pick these people out from the subway, we send four or five EMTs down with a few police officers, put them on a stretcher, take them to the hospital for a couple of days. We put them back out on the street and there they are on the subway again with a hospital bracelet, needing help again. And all we're doing is kicking the can down the road and we're just making it more expensive for all of us and we're not helping these people. And you know, homeless people come up to me on the street. And one gentleman the other day started talking to me about all sorts of concerns and I realized he was actually concerned about the public bathrooms in a local park in the Lower East Side. And he said, "You know what, Aaron? They're clean in the mornings, but by the middle of the day, the toilets are overflowing and full of X, Y, Z." And the point is, we're failing these people. We're not giving them the help that we need. And that's why we need people like you, Mildred, people like you as well, to fight for real reform in City Hall.
Actually, we're kind of, we're hitting our deadline here, but if you have additional questions, probably you can maybe ask the question.
I think the lady with the glasses, she's been holding her hand up for like ever. And I felt like you had a town hall meeting.
Let's ask a quick question and very quick answers then, because we don't want to go too late.
Hi, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to ask my question. I have papers sticking to me. I'm a 15-year resident of Watts Street, right at the corner of Greenwich, and I have a really basic safety concern that I think affects thousands of people who both live and work or just visit the area, and that is pedestrian safety in that area. There's essentially cannot cross the street safely from the north side of Canal to the south side of Canal between the hours of, say, 4:30 onwards up to 9 o'clock on a pretty much nightly basis. It's a question, there's a lack of enforcement of any traffic rules. The, the smaller streets below Canal Street, you can't safely cross there either. There are people who, we see this on a daily basis, go backwards down our streets. They ride up on the sidewalks to avoid the cones that are left there by the police to block traffic off of certain streets. They run through stop signs. So this is a daily thing. We cannot cross the street daily at Canal Street due to westbound traffic going into the tunnel as well as traffic trying to turn left down Greenwich from Canal Street and so on.
So the question is, what should be done?
So my question is threefold, I suppose. Are you aware of how bad it is? Is it a concern to you? And how will you help to enact common sense law enforcement there so that there is pedestrian safety? Because right now, I've lived there 15 years and there are a number of ways in which I don't like the way the neighborhood has changed, but this is a constant. And I'd like you to address that.
Sorry, Desha?
The first thing we can do is use our tax money properly and get crossing guards over there because we had a similar issue on Grand Street with the congestion and it's, it's, it's due to the overdevelopment. So the reason why that area is congested even more now is because of the overdevelopment. And Pike Street has been closed since 9/11. Pike Street should be open and it's not open. And I would advocate to open that because they're claiming they cannot open it due to a terrorist or a future terrorist issue. And I think that we are strong enough right now since 9/11 to have that street open so that we can relieve some of that congestion because at the moment, there is no moratorium on future developments and there's about to be nine mega towers in our area. So actually, I actually brought a picture of them. This is getting off the subject a little bit, but this is a picture of six of the nine towers that are going to go up in our area. And if you think it's crowded now, wait till these towers go up. So I would advocate, one, for crossing guards like they did in Grand Street so that the traffic could move a little safer. And then, two, I would advocate to open up Pike Street again. Thank you very much.
Aaron?
Yeah, it's, yeah, Park Row. Thank you, Christopher.
I am aware of the issue. And I can't tell you the number of families that come to me when I'm at the farmer's market, for example, in Tribeca on Saturdays and say, "We're legitimately concerned about street safety." Another street is Hudson Street. Cars travel very quickly on Hudson Street in Tribeca. And also streets right here in front of Washington Square Village are very wide streets and traffic comes barreling down. And you have a lot of kids in the community. And as I said earlier, you have a lot of seniors in the community. So one thing that I've been advocating for is a comprehensive study about how we use our streets in Lower Manhattan. We've ceded all of our streets virtually to cars and we actually need to think ahead. We need to think long-term as we start talking more about sustainability, as I advocate for the environment, about how we're going to use the streets and how we can all accommodate each other. And it's not only about safety, it's also about the environment and it's about sustainability. There's some things we can do as a temporary measure, like more enforcement and maybe crossing guards, but we need longer-term solutions as our population gets older and as we have more families in the community. Thank you very much for your concern and your question.
I would also advocate to see how many bike, bicycle lanes are around because right now, there's a lot of congestion in the city because Bloomberg wanted to have like a gazillion bicycles in the city. Yes, it's good for the environment, but it's also causing a lot of traffic. Thank you very much.
Less bike lanes? Less bike lanes or?
Yeah, depending on the area and study that area and see how many bike lanes are over there because are there a lot of bike lanes over there? No? Okay.
Okay, Chris?
Do I get another three minutes now that she's rephrasing the question?
No, that was the original question.
I believe it's a lack of urban planning. My office, my campaign office is on Franklin and Broadway. And so I have to cross Canal on the west part of it almost on a daily basis. And people are scared to even move because they don't know if someone's going to try to run the light to make sure that he gets into the Holland Tunnel five minutes earlier. And it's actually having law enforcement actually do something. You know, we do see in the entrance of the Holland Tunnel, there's just officers parked right there and not doing anything. You know, it's keeping them accountable. So it's going to the local precinct and identifying the issues, but it's also having research done to mitigate the traffic on Canal Street because it's not only a traffic issue, it's also a health issue. Many of those exhausts that come out of those cars cause asthma for the community along Canal. And so it's something I, I, I'm affected with every single day and I will do something about. But I think it's all about urban planning because it hasn't been updated in decades.
10 seconds. One thing we can do is create special safety zones where you double the fines. You know how there are work zones where you have double, twice the, where you have double fines in a work zone? You could, you could create special safety zones where there's a safety hazard and double the fines and you have signs up and people will behave themselves.
Okay. All right. So we started a little late, so we're ending a little late. Let's have the closing statements from the candidates now and we'll do it for the opposite direction we opened in. So Chris, you can start for two minutes.
Thank you, everyone, for sticking around so late today. But it's really important that we talk about these issues. You know, these issues, no matter where you live in our district, whether it's community engagement, overdevelopment, you know, the lack of transportation, have to be discussed. And have to be discussed because on September 12th, you're going to make an important decision of who's going to lead this community for the next four years. I think today I've been able to illustrate my track record of actually working with community members, doing outreach, identifying issues, and doing everything that I can as a resident, as a citizen, to make sure that they get solved. Whether it's individuals who are legally detained by ICE or people who want to build a community or guard it, is standing up and doing the work and creating an opportunity for people to have a better life in Lower Manhattan. So today I asked humbly, humbly that for your vote. It'll mean a lot because I have a vision for our district. I think we should have a vision for our district. We shouldn't just talk about what our council member has done wrong, is what we want to do about it. Have town hall meeting, enact participatory budgeting, make sure that our waterfront is protected, make sure that our tenants, whether you're a residential tenant or a commercial tenant, have protection. And that's what I'll do. I'm ready. I have the track record that on day one, I will represent the people of District One. Thank you.
Desha?
Like I said, I've been in this race for only four months. I'm running to protect the city that I love. I am not a career politician. I am not backed by Wall Street. I am not bought or sold. I am not on layaway. I am here to represent my community, whether it's a housing issue, to pass the Small Business Job Survival Act, the Chinatown Working Group Plan, to work with my community for height restrictions, to work with my community with less than. All they want is an honest chance so that these buildings will not go up. If buildings like this end up going up in the waterfront, trust and believe they will go up everywhere else. This does not only affect the people on the Lower East Side, this affects District One in its entirety. We need to come together as a community and look for people that have already had, had experience in this arena, battling people, someone with a backbone to tell a developer, "Hey, guess what? You are a parasite. You are using working people as host and you are the biggest welfare recipient around." It is not the working poor or the working middle class that does not have an opportunity to have a home or a good job. The people that are funneling money out of our community is the 1%. I am a Berniecrat. If you want someone to fight for your community, I am the fighter up here because I have experience in saving people's homes. If you want somebody to sue the Department of City Planning for changing the use of words like minor site modifications, our new buildings, that is me. If you want someone to advocate against 421A tax abatements for the rich and exclusively tax havens for the rich, that is me. I will do that on September 12th because I've been doing that for the last 25 years. Thank you very much. It's 20 and 25 years. I've been doing that all my life. If you're trying to fact-check how long I've been doing it, I can give you testimonials. Thank you.
All right. So my name is Aaron. Thank you. My name is Aaron Foldenhour and I ask for your vote today. Now, you have all sat here very patiently for two hours and 15 minutes and you may not ever want to hear from us again. But in case you do, we were all on TV a couple of weeks ago on the Manhattan Neighborhood Network. So if you want to see us debate as we did a few weeks ago, you can go to YouTube and Google District One Debate and you can hear us talk in more detail about a number of other issues. So please feel free to look us up on YouTube, District One Debate. Also, let's not forget today that unfortunately, Margaret Chin is not here. I was actually excited about the opportunity to have a dialogue with Margaret Chin, to actually ask her the tough questions, and I know you were too. So I was disappointed when Lincoln told me unfortunately, that Margaret Chin refused to attend. How many of you guys received Margaret Chin's newsletters in the mail? So I looked carefully at Margaret Chin's newsletters and she purports to tout her so-called accomplishments. And so I'm looking at a few of them here. $75,000 for some new whiteboards, $40,000 for a MacBook, $70,000 for improvement to a park. But these folks are scraps. These are crumbs. And why I'm running is that I'm sick and tired of getting only crumbs from our government. What New York City needs is real reform from top to bottom and we need to fight the political establishment. That's why I, Aaron Foldenhour, am running and that's why I ask for your vote today. Thank you all for being so patient for today and for coming out. Really appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out. Thanks to Judson Church, thanks to the candidates, a great group. And you have a great choice on September 12th. Remember to vote.
And thank you, Lincoln, for hosting this debate. And thank you for The Villager and Downtown Express as well.
Thank you, Lincoln, for hosting the debate. And you know that I'm not being backed by Wall Street's bitch. Thank you very much.